Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over 40 artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Keller, would you like to speak?
Sure, absolutely. Where's the best place for me to stand? Right here?
Probably.
Yeah, there you go.
Just want to make sure. Hello, I'm Ryan Keller. I'm the Executive Director with Thrive West Central. Thrive does a whole bunch of things for the region, but we're the Regional Economic Development Group and we're the Area Agency on Aging, we're a regional planning organization, and we also operate our Rural Transit Program for the region, in addition to a whole bunch of other things as well. And today, I'm here to kind of talk a little bit about rural transit. So I have a document I'll pass out.
That's that little bus you see running around?
That's that little bus, the little bus with the vans that we have. Passa, yeah, we'll just pass them around. Keep me with at least one here. So in the past, we've operated aging and disabled transportation throughout our region, but specifically for Vermillion, Vigo, and Park Counties. We've had the opportunity to expand out and do more what they call rural transportation. Before, you had to be at least 60 years of age and/or be disabled to qualify for the transportation services. Now, we have the opportunity to make it a true rural transit program where it's anybody of any age for any reason, you can come and get a ride during any of our hours and go anywhere you'd like to go within that service area. So we really like to expand out more than what we're doing, but currently, we've been piloting this program here this year within the county. So you can see where we used to be at when we were just doing aging and disabled transportation within Park County back in January. We had less than 500 trips we were doing, and now we're up near 2,500. That's kind of where we were at in June, or miles, those are miles, I'm sorry, miles, not trips. But over a three-month period from May up until August 1st, we did 315 trips that started somewhere here in Park County, and we took them around, or we took them down to Vigo County. Most of those trips go to Union Hospital, or they'll go to Clinton for Walmart groceries. Sometimes we'll take people, you know, to Super Walmart, places like that where they can get services, and then we bring them back here. And we're looking for funding partners to be able to keep this program going for the years to come. So we're looking for about 16,000 per funding partner. And to do that, back when I originally did this proposal, it was in May, I was looking at April's numbers, and you can see here the big jump that we had. I was looking for about 10,000, and now we're up to about 16,000 when I ran the numbers today to say, hey, how do I get ready for this presentation and go? And I'm like, ooh, we've jumped. But that means the demand's there, and right now, I looked at the call logs today with our program manager, we're only able to meet about 67% of the demand that's here within the county. So we're turning away about a third of the people that call just because there's no room, no ridership, nothing available. We need more vehicles. We just got a $100,000 grant, a dollar grant from the Oakley Foundation. It'll be made public, more public here soon with the big press release, but that's going to cover vehicle expansion for next year. So we're looking at replacing five vehicles with new, different types of vehicles, just newer, a little better gas mileage, less maintenance costs, to lower the cost that we're currently paying. So we're actively trying to grow this program. There's a huge need, if you talk to any of the medical professionals, the number-one need within all of our rural counties, and really even in Vigo County, is transportation to medical appointments, to, you know, nutrition things, food services, things like that, sometimes even work back and forth. We take, I think we got about 5% to 7% of our riders are work transport that we take to their jobs. So it's a great program, and I think it's something that we, as a region, really, really need, and we're just been lacking for a long time. And so we've decided to step up and get creative and see how we can make this work. Any questions?
What's your service area, I mean, for us? Is it entirely Park County?
It's entirely Park County. So I asked that question before I came today. What areas are we serving within Park County? And they said that we see ridership in pretty much all throughout Park County. So we go all the way up to Turkey Run and Marshall, we go to the Mansfield area, Raccoon Lake area, we go down in Mecca, Monizuma, Rockville. I mean, we're pretty much everywhere. Anywhere people call, we go, and the word just kind of continues to expand. You know, we had a little extra ARPA dollars that we were used to cover some of this this year. Really, our ARPA dollars runs out in about September. So we're going to fund it the rest with some of my cash reserves that I have all the way through the end of the year to say, hey, let's keep it going through the end of the year because the new Endra contract comes into play in January. So that's why we're actively trying to fundraise and say, hey, let's keep it going because we've proven that it's, there's demand here versus just we were speculating that, hey, we'll see if we can get four riders here and there. But nope, there's demand. People need rides.
Have you talked to any other communities in Park County, or were we first?
You're first on my list. I went ahead and submitted the funding proposal to the county last, I think, June, early June, late May, somewhere around in there. I know everybody's starting to think about budgets for next year, and so I'm on the campaign trail, so to speak, saying, hey, how do we get funding partners to do this? I kind of have it broken down into four groups, or four ways to fund this. So rider fares, because if you want to use the transit, we don't think it should just be completely free. We think that there should be a cost associated with it. So it might cost you $4 per trip, or $5 per trip, or whatever it is. Right now, it's on a donation basis, but if we were going to do a program like that, we'd set the program rate just to equal out what it would be for 25% of the cost. You were 25%, the county was 25%, and then we'd like to go just philanthropy 25%. So maybe that's the community foundation, maybe that's other grants or groups that we can go out and raise money. So that way, the burden doesn't solely rely on one entity, and we're divvying that up between public and private funding. We don't ever think it should go to one group or the other solely.
What's your current Park County schedule?
So we start our routes at 7:30, and we go all the way till 4:30. So generally, Park County is either one of our, since it's the furthest distance away that we typically travel. We go up to northern Vermillion County, but we got less ridership up there than what we do in Park County. So usually, you're one of our first pickups with one or two of our vehicles, and then you're one of our last drop-off spots. So we're hitting that 7:30 to leave our office and come up. And some nights, just depending if somebody gets out of a late appointment, or they get stuck somewhere, we don't leave them. So last week alone, we had two different drivers on two different nights that they didn't get back in until 6:30 because somebody got out of a late doctor's appointment, we weren't going to abandon them, make them find another ride, so we waited, and they were all the way up in Marshall. So we got them up there and then took them down. But 7:30, 4:30 is where we're at now.
And do you have to set day per week, or is that just there, or you should take the call on whatever their appointment day is? I mean, you're flexible with that?
Right now, we're up here just about five days a week. Just about. You know, depending on funding, if we weren't able to get all funding, we may have to say, hey, we're going to only do two days a week or something here just based on funding. But right now, it's about five days a week, and we're up here.
Do you find a lot of the appointments are our medical appointments, or all the trips?
The majority, and what we tend to do is we group them together. So if they're going to a medical appointment, and they feel up to it, and they need to stop at a grocery store, or they need to go somewhere else, we just boom, 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 take them, drop them, and whoever else is on the bus or the van with them, they're along for the ride too. It is public transportation. So we group them all together. We're, very rarely are we coming up here for one person. We're usually coming up here for max capacity that we can fit on, and you're spending the day with us usually. You know, you're with us for a while, but most people are up for that.
I assume they tend to be elderly?
Yeah, we have a lot of elderly, but you, we actually have some folks that are, quite a few that are under 60 that ride as well. And it could just be that they don't have reliable transportation, and they need to be able to get somewhere, they only have one car per family member, and they're trying to figure out, how do I get down here for something and get back up? We took somebody the other day to go get their drug screen for a job. They had to go down to Terre Haute, to the place by the mall, and so we picked them up up here, took them down, they did their drug screen stuff, picked them up, took them back, and they said it was for employment. But, you know, it is the first time I'm coming to speak to you, and I'm not expecting to answer by any means tonight, but I just wanted to kind of come and introduce this, and, you know, ask for your consideration in the future. I'm happy to come back another time or set up another meeting for us to kind of go into it with greater detail. I can bring my program manager, I can bring some of the drivers. You know, we can, we want you to be comfortable with what we're doing, but...
Well, I think it'd be interesting to have some data as far as you see from Park County to answer questions from the community that my question, why we want to help fund this project, that'd be good. So yeah, to get some data as far as how many people it's saying among, in Park County, and perhaps get some Rockville information, just to have, once somebody asks a question, it's awkward if you don't have any data. But yeah, it's a nice service. It's interesting to meet out there, but a lot of folks just don't have the...
Yeah, that's something we usually take for granted, that most of us have cars, and we don't ever think about the population that doesn't have cars.
So you run three counties?
Yeah, we run three counties right now, so...
How many, or four?
Well, we're just now getting into Clay, so we're barely doing any trips.
How many buses do you have?
I think we do about one trip a week to Clay County, and it's usually just for a handful of people. Right now, we currently have six in operation.
Six?
Six in operation. And the goal is to make a pretty robust system that I would imagine within, you know, three, four, five years will be up around 15 to 20 is the goal, just to meet the demand. You know, most of the demand is in the urbanized area, so in the Terre Haute, Vigo County area, but I think we could probably, if funding allowed for it and we could find a good way to sustain it, I bet we could be running two, three buses in each of the rural counties pretty much nonstop. And it could then turn into more of a workforce transportation and all sorts of stuff. Clay County's interested in looking at something for their city, their whole county, but then specifically the city's looking for something in Brazil, and they want to do what they call a deviated fixed route where that runs along a certain set corridor, kind of does a loop sort of, but it varies on, you know, you get called out, you can go so far off the loop to pick riders up, but they're looking at it for their school attendance rate. Because what they find is they have low school attendance on certain times of the year. If the kids miss the bus and both parents are working, they have no way, they'll call the parents, and the parents will say, I'm at work, I can't, you know, I can't go and pick them up and take them to school. So they're looking at that in conjunction to help their attendance rate for more money and school funding that way, so they can, they get the kids to school who conveniently miss the bus, and mom and dad are both at work, and nobody else is there to take them.
So would the school corporation be contributing as, I'm assuming, to that?
I mentioned it to the school corporation down there, and they said that they may be interested in contributing to that. They said they'd like to do a pilot just to see, but most likely, it would be kick-started the first year to see how it's going, and then for year two funding, if you saw a big difference of attendance, then that's when you could go back to the school and say, hey, we've actually improved your attendance rate by so much percent, you know, would you like to contribute to this funding service?
So this is Indot money, half of your total budget, that 6311 program, what is that, a permanent thing, is it temporary? I mean, is the state committed to this long-term?
It's permanent, committed to it long-term. You know, they have money now, finally, they have money now for expansion into rural counties. Before, they just didn't, money was really tight, but now they've committed to this long-term, mostly because of, I think, the federal government and the need for more, what they call multimodal transportation and mobility scores. We rate really low on mobility scores, the federal government says, so they're forcing the state and say, hey, either you do it, or we're going to force you. And if they start forcing us, then any time there's federal money for transportation, they'll start dictating on so much of that has to go to things like this. So Indot doesn't want that. Nobody wants the federal government telling them what to do. And so they said, we're going to take care of the problem ourselves, so we're going to invest in these systems and expand.
As far as timeframe to get back with us on some numbers as far as specific for the town and county, what do you, how long do you think that would take you to get?
I could be at your next meeting.
Well, I don't know, that's fast, thank you. I don't know what the board's taking.
Yeah, I'd like to see the data. We're going to be starting budget talks here shortly, I'd say within the next month.
Yeah, I mean, I can come back to the next meeting, I can email it to you before then if you'd like to look at it.
Yeah, why don't you send it to Brandy, so he can have to look at it for you. Yeah, you can fit that in your schedule, it's two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, piece of cake. We can do that. That's not a problem. We can very quickly run reports and kind of break it down. Just in this three-month period alone, out of the 315 trips, 301 of those trips involve the town of Rockville.
Wow.
Yeah, so you'll see when we run the full report. Now, there's less numbers, you know, starting off in January, but really, you'll see as we start to get into those, that it just kind of goes up like this. And the town of Rockville is the key place where a lot of people want to go because the grocery store, the bank, all the services, you know, it's the place to go. So this is where, this is where a lot of folks stop.
Okay.
But happy to do that.
They just call the number?
Yep, they just called, they just call our number and schedule a ride. Sometimes, you know, if we have, if somebody calls like the day of, and we have a vehicle up here, and they say, well, you know, they want a grocery trip or something like that, or a bank trip, or wherever. If we're up here and they say, hey, we got an extra spot, you want to go right now? Sure, we'll swing in, grab you, it's on the way, and, you know, there you go.
Did you say what the capacity was on those?
So it depends on the vehicle that we have, with the vans, and it depends too if they're wheelchair, or if they're ambulatory, you know, and everything. We can fit up to four riders on the van at any one time. If they're all ambulatory, that means they can just walk without assistance. If they're in a wheelchair, you can fit two riders, well, three really, three riders. And then if you're on the bigger buses, we can do, those are 11 passenger, so you can do two wheelchairs plus then nine riders on them. And it just kind of varies depending on the schedule that day, who we have riding, and that determines how we're going to build the routes out and which vehicles we're going to send. We like to send the vans if we can, just because they're better on gas mileage. They get about twice the gas mileage is what those big buses do, but the big buses some days are the most equitable way to do it because you can get a lot of people on. And, you know, sometimes when we got five, six riders, that's the way to go.
Okay.
All right.
Deal.
Thank you all very much, I really appreciate it. If you have any questions in the meantime, feel free to reach out, and I'll get you some more information soon. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and slide out, my kiddos have a back-to-school thing tonight, so see you later. Have a good night.
Mark, are you ready?
Yeah.
Wherever you want to be.
Wherever you feel best.
Home.
Home.
We can't go there. For those of you that don't know me, which probably aren't very many, I'm Mark Nola, 11317 West High Street. Melissa used to be my neighbor, on the other side of the church before it burned down. My house was built in 1842, the new section was 1872, and then I added on the back. I was on the original Rockville sewage system in 1885. On the evening of March 23rd, the sewage system of Tanna Rockville deposited about 1,800 cubic feet of raw sewage into my basement. There wasn't a storm, there wasn't rain, there was a simple backup of the sewage, and it ended up in my basement. It's the second time that's happened in about 10 years. The first time was the first day of Bridge Festival when Chad was superintendent. I don't remember, about five years ago?
Probably, I'd say, maybe.
But after that, I replaced my furnace, I cleaned everything up myself. There was about a foot of pretty thick stuff that was in there the first time. This time, it was a mixture of floating things, and I've even got frogs. After the first time, I checked into getting insurance to cover this because I tried to turn a claim in, and they said insurance doesn't cover anything but sudden and accidental discharge. I could buy insurance for a sump pump that didn't work, but this is a basement drain directly hooked to the sewage system, and the only way of backup is if there's a failure of the system, and that's usually caused by lack of maintenance or overuse. So I was turned down for insurance for it, and that brings me here tonight. What's happened is that two feet, I came down, what, Friday morning, as soon as you were down there at the garage?
Yeah, I probably didn't leave so.
I don't think the office was open yet, and these guys got down there and opened the sewage up as quick as they could, and it was blocked, how far down the street, college?
Not to college, because there's a manhole about a block away from college, about halfway between the two manholes.
Down to where I would refer to is Newland's apartments.
About where the new house is being built.
Yeah.
It's probably, just guessing.
And that's, yeah, that's where the, there was a change on the system when the stormwater system came in. Anyway, what's happened is my furnace was running at the time, it sucked up this raw sewage, threw it all up through the plenum, dropped it down through all of the A coil, blew some back up into the, into the pipes, and took out my water heater, my washer and my dryer. I had an elevated floor in half the basement, it covered that up, took out a couple of vacuum cleaners and things I had stored in the other rooms. And what I'm asking for is what I turned in on the claim in June. And I think that this is something that should be covered by the town's insurance, but it's definitely not covered by mine. And I don't think I should be responsible for something that was deposited into my basement. I paid to take away my sewage, not to deposit into my basement.
Do you add anything to this, I mean?
I mean, other than that, it was, our sewer was plugged, I mean, but, you know, that could happen, unfortunately. We do have troubled sewer lines that we do maintain, that is not considered a troubled sewer line. I don't remember having much trouble at all over there. So, well, but it was backed up, and we was able to get it open as soon as we were notified.
I think that, I wish Nick was here, I think he can talk to you about this. I mean, and I understand that that's been that way for 100 years, but, I mean, we do have an ordinance about having storms and sewer sanitaries and storms tied together.
I passed the smoke test, everything was fine.
Well, yeah, that's interesting, Mark. After it happened the first time, you didn't change anything? I mean, you didn't think about changing anything?
Everything's fine on my property, it's coming back up for you.
Well, you know, you got a drain hooked to sewer, that's always a concern in my mind.
It's happened one time in 150 years, and I was pretty much told it shouldn't happen again because it shouldn't clog up. The sewer in front of me is about a six-foot tall pipe. I'm at the top of the hill.
Six-foot tall?
Six-foot tall pipe out in front of me because it comes off the square, it's about 10 feet down.
Yeah, yeah, I know we've got this ordinance where you aren't supposed to, the state says you aren't supposed to have these things, and when you find them, you're supposed to correct them. We had an incident back in 2012 where, over by a Catholic church, we found out, the guy called me and said, hey, my stormwater's hooked to the sewer line. I said, why'd you tell me that? Much I know, I have to...
Yeah, mine's not.
Well, you're, well, I mean, it's floor drain, it was the same thing.
Not same thing, it's not storm sewer.
Well, it's a drain of some type, okay? Let's back up and just use general drain terminology. I don't know where we stand on it as far as from a legal perspective. Well, a little bit I heard about the last time you were here, I believe I was at that meeting, but, you know, we have this ordinance, and you're not supposed to be hooked up, and what concerns me is you knew you were hooked up.
You had an ordinance saying what?
I can't quote it to you.
Was it the same ordinance as there was when I was on the town board? Because there's been nothing wrong with it for 150 years.
Okay, you've had a good run. But I guess my biggest concern is you, it happened once, and I would have thought you'd want to take in some preventative action just in case it backed up again. That'd be my thought process if it was me.
I was told I shouldn't have to. My pipe's clean. It attaches to your pipe.
Yes, and there ends the issue. I mean, I, again, without Nick to quote the exact ordinance, which, oh, there he is just in time. You know, it's a normal thing to happen. But yeah, as soon as we'll back up, I mean, that's just, they will, it will happen somewhere, sometime, you know, pipes can get clogged for whatever reason. It's always a possibility.
Well...
Hey, Nick?
Hey.
Want to jump in on our sewer?
What's going on?
Mr. Nolan? The, we have an ordinance, I think the ordinance modeled after state statute. Where do we stand on this?
What? That ordinance when I was there was addressing hooking up to the storm sewer.
Storm sewer.
We went around and did a smoke test.
Well, yeah.
That passed all the smoke tests, there was nothing I had to do.
Okay, so we won't call a storm sewer, it's a floor drain in the basement being hooked up to the sewer.
Right, and that ordinance prohibits that.
But that's based on state law, too, isn't it? I mean, that's, that's...
They actually even had language in there requiring that if you had done that, that you remove it.
Oh.
Was it grandfather? It's been there for 150 years. I mean, I can reread the ordinance, but my recollection on the ordinance was that your specific situation is addressed. I don't have it in front of me, I didn't know you were going to be here, so.
Ian's going to look it up. Could we potentially maybe just do where the council would like to give permission for Nick to speak to you about that after he does some more research, and would that be okay?
Sure.
Or he can come back and, I mean, I can give him the information, I can relay the information to you, and then you can do your own reading if you'd like, and then if you have questions, we could revisit the conversation.
So what's the status of your floor drain right now? You're still, you still got a line out to the sewer.
Washer and dryer went in there, and it was there to drain the basement.
Yeah, yeah, that's how they do that.
It's holding up its brick.
Yeah. Well, again, I mean, now, it's a violation, I mean, it sounds to me like it's a violation of what?
They passed that specifically to try to prevent these type of situations.
I mean, I guess what I'm saying, Mark, is you need to find an alternative drain system for your washer and dryer.
Well, I wouldn't do that, I'm going to move out of town.
Okay. But yeah, that's a definite solution to not happening again. Anyway, I guess...
I can find some information, I'd be happy to pass it on to you, and then we can...
So the answer is it's on me?
It looks like it, it sounds like it. We'll have legal counsel look at it one more time, Mark, but I don't know that we really can go down that road with you for reimbursement. You've set me a seat before, you understand sometimes...
I know other people that have been reimbursed.
Well, I can think of one instance perhaps, maybe, but I'm just, I can't think of it for sure.
You do what you got to do, and I'll do what I got to do.
Well, okay.
That's what it is. I'm looking at a toxic discharge from the town that's going to cost about $25,000.
Well, since we're threatening litigation, we can no longer talk to you about this issue.
Who threatened litigation?
You just did with the toxic discharge of $25,000. So if that's the case, we can't talk about this if you're talking about litigation.
So that's the answer from the board, is you can't talk to me anymore unless I have legal representation?
No, the answer from the board is they can no longer talk to you anymore about this since you threatened litigation.
I didn't threaten litigation.
You just threatened a 20-year... You just threatened a twenty-five thousand dollar.
Roll back the tape and you'll see it. I'm saying that there's a twenty-five thousand dollar loss and it shouldn't be covered by me.
Certainly sounds like a threat of litigation.
Take it for what you want.
Well, it either is or it isn't. I mean, if you're wanting to threaten litigation, they can't talk to you. But if you want to discuss the matter after I review the statute, then we can discuss it.
I'll discuss it with you after you review the statute, but I will hold my options open.
Good, rational.
So my advice to the board is to no longer discuss this matter with Mr. Nolan.
Okay. We're done.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Mark.
Where are we at?
Okay, I have claims for six forty-five, two eighty-seven, sixteen. Uh, there's some forty-five thousand dollars for a couple transformers in there. We've got a transfer of fifty thousand to fund the bicentennial for next year. We've got forty thousand in water and wastewater bonds. Got some corrections to some postings, um, twenty-eight thousand dollar payout, a part of our grant, Okra. And I've got a hundred and thirty-seven thousand as part of our project for our Okra grant as well, with just some of the larger dispersments of that total amount. If you have any other questions?
I don't. I move.
All in favor?
While you're signing it, I'll go ahead and ask for the approval for the July seventeenth minutes that I sent.
I think you're.
I never noticed here.
Sorry, I, I read them. I can make that motion. All in favor?
And then I do have, we got a kind of a combination of June and July, so for adjustments, it is four thousand six fifty-one, twenty-two. Several of those are pool adjustments, but if there's any questions on there, I can certainly look those up as well.
There you go. Bunch of pages.
There's a lot.
Any big ones? There's a lot of small ones.
Um, I think it's just a combination of a lot. I don't think there's anything huge that happened in there. On the pool fills, of course, we're just doing wastewater adjustments there. We've had some leaks that people have found, so we have come back and given their one-time adjustment as well on those.
Okay. I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
That's all I have here.
Real quick talk about the, the, we have a meeting Friday till the bid's three o'clock. I'm sure who's gonna be here.
First second number.
First line.
Give me a second.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we had thirty-eight criminal investigations in July as compared to forty-two in twenty-twenty-two. A total of, uh, this year, a hundred and ninety-one at the close of July. And we were two fifty in twenty-twenty-two in July. Eighty-eight have been violent or potentially violent in nature and sixteen of those were in July. Collectively, we responded to five hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. Six traffic crashes, towed or impounded three vehicles, twelve arrests, eight alarm calls, uh, two of those being sent in voices. According to ECWS, which is our e-ticket system, seventy-six entries in July of twenty-twenty-three, one felony, seven misdemeanors, nineteen infractions, zero ordinance violations, seventy-five warnings. In July of twenty-twenty-two, uh, we had four hundred and sixteen calls, forty-two cases, four crashes, twelve impounds, ninety-seven entries with one felony, fourteen misdemeanors, thirty-six infractions, eighty-two warnings and nine arrests. Questions on the stats?
Sounds like you're keeping busy.
Uh, I was approached by Bloomfields. They don't have a date yet, but they're gonna need to close off three parking spaces and the sidewalk, they're gonna be replacing the upstairs windows. Uh, so I just kinda wanted to let you guys know that that will be happening sometime soon. They're waiting on.
Before the festival?
Yeah. That's what I understand. That's all I have.
Okay.
Nick? So the only good thing I really have from public meetings, uh, the ordinance violations, our next date's August twenty-ninth. Uh, we have one that day. We have one September fifth, seven September twelfth and two September twenty-sixth. We have a number that we've had hearings on and been able to resolve. We have one that I know is definitely going to trial. And then there's a couple where they're working on to get them resolved, uh, but they tend to have them resolved by the next four weeks. So, um, making progress. A lot of it has been successful just on the fact that they got notice and they talked to our officers and made, made progress. I, I think out of the ones that we have pending, there's probably only about two or three that will have to go to trial.
Guys, get them cleaned up and not worry about it.
That's all I had.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
Those things I do, I can't talk about.
Uh, school's approaching obviously this week. Everything's ready. Painting, crossings are all painted. The signs are up and for ones to have drove over there, if you look, we have trimmed shadlin back to make it easier access and everything. All the trees are on shadlin. We got them all cut back. Looks much better for the school. And, uh, so they're all ready, other than turning the crossing lights on in the morning. Collie even went over and patched and got all the roads in that area. Had a few holes, so we're ready for, ready for the school start. Aside that, we've been working on storm drains. We have, um, we've got Near East Street, Harris, Virginia, Jefferson, Jackson and West High Street have all been backed and cleaned out and we're compiling the list of repaired and storm grates and we got a few boxes that need some attention. So we've been concentrating on that. The guys have been doing a great job of staying on top of that every day. And, uh, Benjamins, we've been, we've got their water meter installed. They'd asked for an upgrade on it. It's all installed and ready for them. That's been done. They went to an inch and a half. So I'm assuming Tony got you all the information on that? Okay, so all that. Then Electric's been busy with trees. And, uh, on Howard Avenue, the one that you asked about, it's been taken care of. And we had a, a gentleman, Voorhees, that let him come in their backyard and take several trees out, small ones out of the power lines all the way down to the gram. He has, uh, said he would maintain it from here on out and we got some other ones up the road there that had given us permission. So as soon as we can get in there, we've been trying to stay on top of all the permissions and get them out while they're letting us and everything, so, um. I believe that's about, well, we got, we did remove another lead line out on Jefferson Street, I believe, five thirteen. We put a whole new line in.
Is that what that hole was for?
Yeah, yeah. We had to go all the way across the road and board under there. Um, so, uh, that's all been taken care of. We got that all documented from when we start doing our water project.
So that was lead?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the part of it was coming out, but so that's all.
Did you have, how did it all start? Did there was a?
It's a leak. It started leaking. It was an old meter that needed replaced.
Okay.
So it was all bad. So the best way to do it was just go ahead and go from the main over the new pit in. So that's all new at five thirteen, so. And he's been keeping all the records of that that I'll be getting with, uh, Brandy on. So when we do our water stuff, we'll have as much information we can and not have to do that and then.
Talking about that lead situation. How, how much of that do you know about Mike from your viewers?
As far as what's in the system here in town? There's probably really not very many actually lead lines. A lot of it's just like used next door, the almanaz. So I think from my understanding of what they're saying, as long as it's, if it's downstream of your actual flow, they do kinda consider that whole line to be a lead line. Very far as town, a lot of it's something.
Well, we'll probably utilize your resources when we get to that point, so.
So, yeah, I, I opened an email while we were talking about this topic. There was a, is there a questionnaire going out to all the addresses in town to, to mail back? Have you seen?
Not, not yet. We're going, our inventory just got completed. That's on the updates. Um, so Doug and I are gonna work on a schedule. I'm, actually I talked to Troy today, so Mike will probably go and reach out to you a little bit because they do have some key components on their mapping that's showing that they're unsure of the lines, which those houses were definitely built after eighteen, nineteen eighty-eight. So I'd like to ask some questions back to those that I did the, um, conference call with and go over that information first to see where all they were pulling their information because they're still showing that about eight hundred of our fifteen hundred could potentially be led. So maybe checking with you as well on that once we.
So once you narrow it down, would this just go out to a more select?
If we need it.
Yeah.
I mean, depending on where our, our numbers come to, we'll do a visual. I mean, Doug's already been having the guys track the ones that they're already looking at. So we'll just keep building on that. I mean, it's a project that's gonna be completed by October of next year, but we'd like to
Yes.
keep tracking those as quickly as possible.
Yeah, any line they've replaced, it's supposed to be taking a picture of, document with the address, so we know that that's been changed. That's definitely plastic now, so.
Okay.
And that information I'll then upload to their website. So we're working through it.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, the other thing I got, the, the price I give you on the building, that is the repair that you guys asked about for the water plant where the roof is soft and inside, this is, uh, A1 construction. Webber did not get one in today. I don't know. He'll have it in the next couple of days, but as you see, that's forty-five hundred. But there is in the bottom where you write that he, he can't get in and see all the damage. So there's a potential that'll go up a little bit.
You're talking about the fillings?
The fill, no, no, down the water plant itself.
Oh, on thirty-six. Oh, okay.
A little bit of soffit repair. So, uh, actually pretty, I was expecting to be a little bit higher than that. It, it probably will go up, depend on what he finds inside once he tears some of it out. And then the second page is, uh, we had some roof blew off, blow off down there at the building. And, um, I had him while he was in, take a look at it. And this will go to the insurance company. So that'd be an insurance claim, but as soon as I get webs, I can, uh, email that to you. So you can see what webs.
Does he have a timeline to, to?
I, I asked him to try to have it to me today so I could, so we can move on and see where.
Yeah, how long are we gonna keep this open?
Yeah, so.
Man, we don't meet again for two weeks.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't have webs.
So we can get one picked and on a schedule or whatever, so, yeah.
Okay, uh, well, if we don't have by, by two weeks from tonight, well.
Well, I, I was gonna give him a call if he can't. I really expected it to be by Friday, but I never did receive anything.
Okay.
And then like I said, Sean said that he'd like to get started on that building, try by the end of this month. Along the cemetery building.
Cemetery, oh, the, yeah.
Yeah, so then I think B and T will be in within the next two weeks along with Price for the parking lot.
Okay. Now, B and T will be in for?
They're gonna go ahead and bore in the water line on.
They're gonna bore the water line, South Market.
Yep.
Price did the parking lot. Uh, have we got any bench for the building out there on the, the, for the worship compact or?
No, I've got, um, both the web and Sean, and I have not received just yet on that.
Did you send that stuff to Graves and give him a payment on heat sources?
Back to you, Samson takes a look at it and see.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, and we should have enough power out there, I believe, already off the transformer, I believe, Britton said, so that should be good.
Do you know we have gas? Is there gas available out there?
Uh, I couldn't tell you. Yeah, well, yeah, cause we had veteran cross the road there.
I guess while we're on this topic, I was gonna bring it up in a minute, but, but, uh, you know, there've been two scenarios presented, one's to heat the building and there's concern about the efficiency and, and cause you have to exhaust the air out every so often. And then the other idea was heat tape. I'm not comfortable with heat tape. I think, uh, that's kinda risky when you have that many, uh, toilets might not come your way. In the winter, I mean, it gets sub-zero and I don't know if heat tape gonna keep up. But I believe Brandy sent this down, said to Greg, they're going to comment on it. Apparently, uh, AC heating put in the unit down at the sewer plant a couple of years ago, do what we need out there and we go with the heat source. It's gonna be around five thousand. I think that's what it pretty much costs down there. He can have something writing to assume, but, uh, so we'll see what, uh, the, the professionals say, but uh, yeah, he's wondering if there's gas, cause that'd be the way to.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's what you said. We'll just wait on his price and see and then see what Roger has to say or lose. But I'm with you. I just, I don't know if you wanna trust that tape.
Yeah, you know, Graves Plumbing, they've done these units before throughout the state, so they, they, they have experience.
They've been in the back of them, yeah, right? Right.
What else got, Doug?
Um, well, they said it's it. No purchases this time.
No purchases?
No purchases. Uh, and then, uh, we will be getting started, uh, I was hoping this week, but it's not gonna work out this week. Next week, we'll be starting on Voorhees and Tulip to install the driveways, put the cement back in the driveways. This week, they wanted to do it too early. Didn't give us enough time to notify the customers that we're gonna be blocking the driveway or they need to get stuff out of it. Out of the, um, way, so I thought, I wanted to give them a few days' notice. So that will be happening, um, next week and, um, we'll continue with the storm and then I'm going to start employee evaluations later this week and next, so. We go through with some of the employees and especially the new ones and everything, so.
Do we have anybody off of medical right now?
No. No, we had, we had what Dave leave Friday for a little bit. He was back today, has another appointment tomorrow, but. So, but right now, everybody's, everybody's healthy.
That's good.
So. But that's all happening. Shove me more questions?
Yeah, we, we, I, I don't know. I think I ran into you that night, the fellows were out there working on that power outage on Anderson Street, uh, the digger truck. What, what, we were trying to remember where we were at on that. Did we go ahead and, 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 um, agreed to buy that, but we weren't having a firm price? Is it three year out?
Yes, I know we're gonna respond to some issues.
Okay. Are we funding on a separate item on the, on the, on the, uh, well, we fund depreciation, but we wanna do something outside of depreciation?
Well, I don't, I mean, that's just whatever you guys decide to do.
Okay, so you're right, Doug. That's what we did.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't remember. Oh, well, why you just talk about budget? Sorry, guys. Well, as far as equipment, uh, yeah, I don't know what tall, um, you have in mind. We got, we're the oldest truck. How are we on trucks?
Truck wise, well, I actually went down, I should get priced, uh, this week from Paul's Op on a one ton for a dump truck.
What department?
Uh, well, it'd actually be an extra dump truck, cause we, we got two down there that, or one's a two-wheel drive that's.
We talked about moving one down to the chipper.
Well, we'd like to take the little bucket truck we got, the old Ford that we, needs repair for it to actually go back in service. Well, instead of buying a whole new truck, we would like to remove that bed and buy an aluminum bed and put a hoist on it for a dump bed and then we'll convert that over to a chipper truck. We'll build our sides ourselves. That's removable, then we can also use it as a flatbed for going after blocks, hauling big transformers, whatever. Instead of having to buy a whole new truck, a truck still runs good. It's just you, the bed, the bucket part, it's diesel. And that'll also get rid of an eighty-two Chevy that is our chipper truck right now. That's.
Eighty-two?
It's an eighty-two.
Wow. Goes back to you, Dave.
So, uh, yeah, then the old cemetery truck, the old red two-wheel drive, we still have that, which is, um, a lot of rust. It's hard to do much with, so.
So it sounds like they would be asking for a truck.
Well, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to have another dump truck. We're always getting dump trucks, so, but I've got a price coming on in. And I like the Gator and everything we talked about. I got another price on it and some other equipment, but I should have about all my prices hopefully this week, so when we set the budget, we'll
Good.
we'll have all the big ticket items that we can work into the budget then.
Okay.
You good? Good, Joe? Bruce, Mike, you guys got anything?
Well, the clarifier drive, it's been off last June to get refurbished. Showed up this week, so a couple of weeks will be given for it in. this week, so a couple of weeks will be given for it. But you're talking about the heat out there. I'm not sure, I don't think they can use gas to heat that area. I think it has to be a sealed electric.
Well, it's a sealed, you know, what are they using down at the plant right now? It's electric?
It's electric, yeah.
Okay.
Can't be an open flame.
Can't be open flame. Yeah, they have systems that aren't open.
And that may have something in gas, but...
Well, in your experience, would you rather have it, you think we really need a heat source? You think tape?
Yeah, I think you probably only need...
Makes me nervous without...
Because you're going to have water there.
Oh, yeah, we got to put, it's going to be a hydrant plus water washers.
Yeah, it's a worship compactor, so it's going to be watered all the time.
Yeah, you definitely need a good heat source.
Well, okay.
I just have your Williams maintenance agreement for the generators, so I would just ask that you guys could, would like to vote. There's two generators down there, maintenance agreement on each one of them, but the total's 2585 for that agreement so that they can come and, they're going to wait for this to come back so that they can service those.
They'll come in September, yeah.
Would you guys mind to make a motion?
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, you got anything? Got any old business you want to talk about, Park?
Old business? Oh, go ahead and let Brandy.
Well, I'm going to go last.
We're going to see who's going to go last, so.
Okay, okay. I don't know, guys. Let me run through. I got some scribbling here. We talked about the lift station, Oka Grant things coming up in, the comp plan's in October, so that's coming up not until...
What you're talking about, what we're going to be talking about?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm getting into her stuff. No, I don't think so. I think I'm good.
Do we have any new business that you would like to talk about?
Well, it's on back here, new business. Can we wait for that?
That's where we're at.
No, that's where we're at. I mean, we're...
Okay, okay, we're, okay. Well, we had, we had the Anderson Street thing.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that. Brandy.
Okay, well, then, I'm good. I'm good. Let her talk on the floor.
We're trying.
Shut you down. I figured it that way.
We're trying to get you to say you don't have anything to talk about.
Do we have any public comments?
I believe I do.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Michelle Mondo. I'm site manager at Billy Creek. And I am coming before you guys because we are looking at acquiring the Presbyterian Church on Market and High Street to bring it into the Billy Creek collection, both to preserve it as well as to expand our offerings to the county and community. With that coming up, as we are negotiating the terms of that, one of the things that we are hoping to do is use the parking spaces out front during Covered Bridge Festival. We are hoping again this year to offer the free shuttle to and from Billy Creek from the square, though PCI has taken away our permission to use any of the parking spaces on the square itself. So we're hoping with this new acquisition that we would be able to use those parking spaces. I don't really know the proper ways to go about that other than coming before you.
Well, what do you want to...
I'll go with it.
What do you want to, is there going to be a shuttle pickup, drop off?
Yes, yes. So we would need to block off the spaces. My hope is to do the ones that are on the south side of the church, the ones on High Street west of Market.
I mean, for your shuttles?
For our shuttles, yes. It would be for our shuttles. We would be running them. It runs about every half hour. We've got two shuttles, one to two depending on the needs that we ran last year, and it was about every half an hour that it would pick up and drop off.
You going down?
Are you tidying to the church?
Um, probably, yes. Yes, because you gotta, you figure you gotta have at least a 2,500 duly pulling the wagon as well as the wagon lift itself.
What's your route? You aren't going to, where are you going to turn around at?
That's a great question, and that's one that we will look further into if and when we get permission for this. But the idea is that we would not go on the highways at all. We stay on High Street.
Yeah.
So it might be that we go up, yes, it might go up High Street further, turn around, and then come back down.
High Street will be one way during the festival.
Right here.
On down High Street.
You have to go down Pennsylvania and come back up.
Okay.
Right back where.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's what we ended up doing last year. I think we kind of snuck out on 36 for one block.
REMC, RMC coming up and then they go back the same way.
And I think that's what we did.
Well, I didn't entertain a motion or a motion for it.
I think it's a neat service. I remember years ago, it was kind of neat, tractor and wagon, I see.
Um, probably pickup trucks, just because the pickup truck has a little bit, it's a little bit safer to pull on main roads, so we've got a little bit better braking system. We've got a little bit more confidence in our pickups.
That's your liability.
Yeah, we have insurance for it. We will have, you know, we'll carry that insurance.
You made a question.
I can. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you so much. We're excited to be even larger part of the community.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Michelle's here. Greg Larson, who is the...
He's my boss.
Head honcho out there, had also inquired several times, in fact, he was going to come to one of these, about when the bricks get removed from Market Street, about somehow acquiring some of those for the benefit of Billy Creek.
Yes, so that was the other thing I was supposed to have that.
Yeah, we're planning on salvaging it, so.
Yes, we would love to include those as part of Billy Creek all the way through paving all of the main roads of the village with the bricks coming out of Market.
Well, we can talk about that. Yeah, I'll meet him.
Really, all we, all we would want from you guys is to just bring a dump truck and dump them in the corner of the property. We stack them, we go through them, we take care of it from there.
They're supposed to be on pallets, I think, so.
That would be even better, but we understand that if they just get dumped in, we will take that responsibility.
Okay.
You got something to say, I'll tell you.
I just had a couple of questions. I guess I just, I don't understand the work around or how, how to go about this. So, as you all know, you guys raised your electric rates, so I started looking at, may possibly go into RMC for electric. So when I contacted them, they said that they, I don't know if it's a contract with the town or it's just, you know, how it started when RMC came in, but they said they want our service in Rockville's area. They won't go in there and Rockville won't go into their area. I'm technically not in town limits, so I don't know. Is there a way, like, can you guys provide a waiver for me in order to go to RMC or... Because there's just some, there's just some benefits that RMC has that, like, you guys don't, I can't look at my watch, you know? I want to see if, if I'm using the most power at 12 o'clock in the daytime, I can't see that, you know? And RMC has a website where I can get on there and look. Obviously, the rate changes as well. I'm paying about $75 to $100 more per month on the town as opposed to being on RMC's, you know? But I didn't know what the, I didn't know what my, I mean, I know where the boundary is for town limits, but I'm technically out of town, but I can't get on RMC. I didn't know if there's, you guys do a waiver or is this something that you negotiated?
Are they even wanting to take you on or they just, is that their reason for...
That's just what they told me, because I said, well, you know, I'm just looking at prices. I want to compare. And they said, where's your house? I gave them my address and they're like, well...
Do you know if they have service near you?
Oh, yeah. They have, I mean, there's a pole in my yard and it went, actually cut across my yard until they removed it and then they ran it. I mean, it's literally right across my house.
Guess that'd be something we'd have to talk to RMC about.
Well, they charge for kilowatt hour, do you know?
RMC, 10 cents or 11 cents.
Okay.
I think they're 10 and a half currently and 112.
I don't, unless I'm doing the math wrong, my last couple of bills have been around 17 cents a kilowatt.
We can, I mean, we'd be happy to break it down.
Well, there's a meter-based charge. I mean, I don't know where they're at. There's a usage and then there's your meter base.
I factored in that their usage, their 10 cents plus a $40 meter base.
Okay, they're $40?
I just, yeah, I mean, the give or take, but...
Yeah, I'm shocked there's a big difference between us.
Well, I didn't know also, that was another question I had since, because I've been sent a couple texts from other people that are in town with their bills and their usage or their kilowatts were different rates than mine. So I didn't know, is there a different rate for being out of the town limits versus in town limits?
Yes, we have to charge, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm up to like seven, and I'm all geothermal. I can't go anything else other than electric. But 17 cents is a little salty, you know?
We can get you a breakdown just to compare what we have compared to what Arrowhead calculations. If you, if you want that, just call us and we'll have a, we can get a complete breakdown for you. Just might help a little bit.
But I didn't know, I guess my thing was if, if they're fine with it, do I have to get a waiver from you guys or how does that work, I guess?
We really need to talk about that. I'll have to look into it. I don't know that.
Never been asked that question. Interesting.
I'll have to look into it.
So Doug, is there anything passed in that you, I mean...
They, well, sorry to interrupt, but they said that their, their district is, what's that dirt road past my house?
10100.
Where your detour is for the, yeah, that's where they said that Jason Frazier's where RMC kicks in.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to them. The only problem I see with it, I, I mean, I understand your, your problem, but, I mean, it's a slippery slope going all the way around town, so...
Right. Well, I just didn't know if there was a way that you guys could say, well, it's, it's just literally town limits and anything outside of that, they can service or, but just don't move town limits on me. Don't push it to my house.
That begs the question, Doug, because you could annex the service area to them.
Yeah, it's an interesting question. Couple of issues there. Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, like Fran said, if you want to call in and get some kind of a breakdown, then we'll, you know, obviously, we'll talk to RMC and...
Are you, is there any, are you guys looking ahead in the future of having that option to where the consumer can see where they're using power or when they're using power or...
We'd have to talk to INPA, our electric provider, to see what kind of, what we'd have to do to do that. So that's something we might want to ask INPA about. We have a meeting with them next Tuesday at 11, week from tomorrow. Yeah, so we could bring that up. You want to?
Yeah, we really need to talk to the software provider though.
Okay, yeah, so you think it'd be Keystone?
Well, the utility, yeah, but it's, it's the software.
We'll look into that.
I had it at 12, 13?
Hey, I thought it was 11, 12:30 next Tuesday.
But can we just give us a little bit of time?
Sure.
And I'll get back to you and get you some information?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
I really thought you were going to ask me about Market Street, but that's where I thought he was going to...
Hey, no, I want it done, but I'm fine with you guys not doing anything to it. Yes, when I do all the way around.
It's going to happen, so.
When it, well, just to be nosy, when's that plan on starting? Because I know the signs are out, but...
Maybe in the next two weeks. The plans...
So that's you don't know?
No, I do know. The erosion plan was just submitted to Endot actually this morning. I just got notification of that just this morning. Endot will review that and send it back. We'll have a meeting about construction and moving on, so I would say no earlier than two weeks, but I can't.
Are you guys going to do, just like Howard, completely shut it down or you're going to do it in sections? Like, how far are you shutting it down first or, like, can I come a little this way and jog over or...
I doubt it at first. I mean, the plan is to start from the south end. I would assume they're going to start at the town line for wherever they're, they're going to probably go, I'd say up to at least to the apartments would be my guess, but probably more like Pennsylvania. They'll probably, you know, go through there. I don't know that, but, I mean, there'll be access obviously for the, for the people who live there, but I'm probably going to be letting anybody through it, so. But that's, I mean, that's their call. They'll, they'll have that figured out, so.
They have said that any resident will have complete access. I mean, unless they're right in your driveway, you may not be able to pull in your driveway for a period of time, but they're not going to block any access to any homes that wouldn't allow you to head south and get to your home.
Kevin, you got anything else?
I didn't until Mr. Nolan showed up for meeting. Just maybe when you're passing all this out, a little clarification, you know, based on the ordinance, Mr. Nolan doesn't have a bathroom in his basement and I do. So regardless of how many drains I have in my basement, I still, if they weren't there and just come up through my shower and my toilet and my sink, the incalculable times that I've had up to five feet of water in that basement. And I've probably spent 25, 15 of them with UMAC to solve the problem, 8,000 with Ben Franklin Plumbing to put in the very complicated backflow system or check valve system out on the street, sump pump, big giant sump pump in the side yard and pump it into the storm drain, the actual drain field. Not to mention the loss of a full kitchen and sofas and all that stuff. I'm just going to be curious to, you know, keeping that in mind, am I different? And I don't have receipts for any of that, so I'm not going to be worried about this at this juncture, but I'm not a part of that ordinance because I've got a bathroom down there. So I have no choice but to be hooked to the sewer system and I just basically see what the outcome is.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd rather not discuss it publicly since there's been a threat of litigation.
Not from me, but I hear you, but I'm saying...
I will tell you that Indiana Administrative Code backs up our ordinance. So it's Indiana law. It's not just Rockville's law. It's the law throughout the whole entire state of Indiana.
But that's it as it pertains to Mark Nolan's problem, not mine.
So if you look, and I can give you this, but the ordinance says, "No person shall discharge or cause to be discharged any unpolluted waters such as storm water, groundwater, roof runoff, subsurface drainage, sump pumps, basement or yard drain, or cooling water to any sewer except storm water runoff from limited areas, which storm water may be polluted at times, may be discharged to the sanitary sewer by permission of superintendent." So unless the superintendent gave you permission to do it, this made it where you can't do it. And this is based off the Indiana Administrative Code as to plumbing-related matters.
Where would my sewer line have gone if not to the sewer?
Well, so this...
And what happens is, what happens...
This isn't, this isn't...
The storm water has infiltrated the sanitary storm system, in the sewer system, and has backflowed, clear back to when Pam Leford lived there. This is going back to 35, 40 years. And I'm the only one to have corrected action to, you know, separate the storm runoff.
Right.
But it's still, the basement line is still hooked to a toilet and a shower and a sink, and that is the sewer line. The fact that my, that the storm water infiltrated the sanitary sewer in front of, in front of that, on Jackson Street, and then flooded, I'm not talking about what he's saying, a foot of water. I'm talking about had, had sofas floating.
I understand what you're saying.
And so I'm just curious, see, if that's the difference, I mean, there's no sense of, the ship has sailed, the problem has been solved, but if it happens again, if you don't get everything fixed up right like we're planning next year too, is that the difference between what Mark is pressing?
He, he's not asserting that he had water that should be going into the sewer, going to the sewer and then shoot back out into his basement, if that answers your question. He's saying that he had water that is clearly prohibited from going into the sewer.
Which is what mine was.
Right. You guys, this is different.
I'd say, but what came into my basement was storm water. I drained all of Jackson Street into, into my basement. So I guess, I'm just trying to ascertain the difference where the ordinance...
You can't, you're not supposed to pump runoff or storm water, groundwater, sump pumps, surface drainage.
And I was not doing that.
Right, I know, but you guys aren't the same, is what I'm telling you.
Okay. So I'm just, I'll just in the outcome and what he...
Well, I think I already told you what my view of the law on it is, is the Indiana Administrative Code as well as our ordinance say he shouldn't have been doing that. The fact that he didn't know that was what the law was is kind of like the guy that shoots somebody. He says, "I didn't know it's illegal to murder somebody."
And again, no, no spurs that had been marked and he's, it's a problem.
Right.
I understand the problem, but again, because there's actually a commode attached mine and it was going the right way.
Right, you're allowed to have, the question is, are you allowed to have a bathroom in your basement discharged? in your basement discharged into the sewer? Yeah, bathrooms are allowed to discharge into the sewer. Stump pumps are not, groundwater is not, things of that nature are not.
No, my, my, my sump pump always did pump to the outside, but.
And that's why we publish our ordinances when we pass them and try to make the public aware and have public meetings and things like that is so people are aware that you're not allowed to do these things.
But again, forewarn is forearmed, and so that would be my thing too, if the, if the town board is considering, along with Jackson Street's renovations of, of storm sewers and sidewalks and roads, that we've, we've asked them to also replace the sanitary sewers, which are in desperate need of being done to eliminate those problems in the future.
But I can't answer as to that.
We'll talk about that storm water, here we go.
I would also say that if you start paying people out for violating your ordinances, that's a very slippery slope as well.
I don't know if that's the way there is.
My, my recommendation to the town board is not to discuss the matter with Mr. Nolan.
There we go. I've got, my point is, if the slope gets slippery, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm putting my speed on.
Right, that's, that's why that law is in place, is to try to protect the, the type of things and also protect our sewer system from being.
I hear you.
Flooded over.
I got an important thing to bring up here. School crossing guard, do we have our guards in place? We do. You're, you're working over there? Well, I just care if school starts any day, so we're good.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Thursday.
Okay, what about 41, anybody, or 36, anybody there?
Yes.
What do you?
Tiffany Fisher.
Okay, a good deal. Interesting.
Good deal. Anybody else? Randy, would you like to wrap it up?
Absolutely. Well, do you want to talk, you want to go ahead and tell me your business?
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll still push.
Yeah, we'll, we've been talking about reclassifying Anderson Street. I talked with Ken Olson many, many, many months ago after we got, started closing up South Market, and he reached back out and asked me if we were still interested, and I said, yes. Now I'm going to ask you guys for a vote on it, so. I mean, it's federal funding, it's, I mean, and, and I mean, we're just doing the reclassification anyway right now, but we have to, we have to have this thing done by November 30th. They'll do all the historicals and all that kind of stuff, get it to a point that we can submit, you know, if we want to continue and do this road, we can, you know, we'll have the, the tools to do it. And if we do, more than likely, it'll be a two-phase, a two-phase job, because they'll go from 41, probably from 41 to Virginia, Virginia on down to the town line on Market, Market Street. I've talked to the county, I mean, obviously not officially, but just talked to them about whether they'd be interested in continuing down Martin. And from, what is it, Pines? From Pines East, that's county anyway, on the north side of the road, if I correct that.
Yes.
So maybe nice if they can get involved in the sidewalks up there possibly, so. But that's all, you know? But what we need to do right now is to see if we want to reclassify that street, that road.
Yeah, it, it's estimated cost, they, they've done this for, for Market, Howard, Erie. Yeah, it's five to 10,000 to get the, this application put together and submitted. And just another thing, I don't think you mentioned, Dave, that I believe the construction there is, it could start, be 2029, so this is a long-term planning project, just like.
So nothing done to Anderson until then?
Well, no, we have the community crossing, we're still looking at for a band-aid. That's not a real long-term solution. We don't have really storm water control just for a little bit. Anyway, that, that's, I think.
Everything we do with community crossings to that point, only basically go down to Pines.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing is bad, so. I mean, we'll blacktop it, but there will be no curves or sidewalks.
What exactly do you mean when you say reclassified? From what to what?
Local to non-local is what, it takes more than local traffic, it's the federal requirement to get reclassified or considered reclassified.
So this will help get money to put sidewalks?
Yeah, this should get.
This will allow us to have federal funding, just like Howard, South Market.
Okay.
Like I said, we've already got Erie Streets been reclassified already, so.
Are there drawbacks to get that designation?
No.
No.
Why not designate all the roads?
Because it not all of them are, take non-local. It has to be something that obviously takes more than just local town traffic.
Yeah, so you're picking up traffic for the county, for the lake?
Right.
And all that, so that's.
Yeah, you have a feeder from the section of the county coming in, just like.
So you're just getting extra money to help maintain.
Well, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's just like Howard, you know, we, you know, DOT asked us to, to, you know, wait a year on Howard, I know it aggravated everybody, but we went from a 20, or from an 80/20 match to a 90, a 90/10 match. I mean, that's hard money to turn down.
Yeah.
I mean, regardless of how much it costs totally, I mean, we're only in it for 20%.
It's pretty good leverage.
I mean, it's, you know, same way with the community, community crossings, I mean, it's, it's hard to turn that money down.
Exactly.
You know, we've, we've done a lot of roads in the last five or six years or.
You make a motion? I'll make a motion.
You make a motion.
I'm in.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now you can have a break.
Okay, just real quick to go through these, of course, our Michigan Street, I may mention that, that's booked out, we're done, moving on with that. The 202301 Anderson, we did rescind that award due to our bids that came in being ineligible. I did get an application resubmitted for a 23-2 Anderson, Walton Howard. That award is sometime in December, I don't have the exact date on that, so we'll wait to hear on that. Hopefully, he awarded that funding again, and they could potentially look at bids, taking bids at the beginning of the year and then maybe spring, springtime, having something to get started on Anderson. South Market, I was just commenting about the erosion plan, so that has been sent to Endot. We'll have a pre-construction meeting again once Endot approves that erosion control plan. 41 North, the line there, still August 14th, their completion date, so nobody will be hooked on to that until at least that timeframe. Water inventory, Deb and I talked about that a little bit, we'll continue to work on that and get a plan together as far as making sure those lines are all inventoried and submitted. We touched base on the parking lot, probably should start on that in the next couple of weeks. Our Oprah Drinking Water Grant, bids are due this Friday, the 11th, at 3 o'clock. We will open those at 3:01. Bike and Pedal, no updates there. Love Station taking bids on that building addition. I have one other thing, there's something maybe that I'm missing on. Can you think of anything you wanted to ask about on there?
Oh, well, what can we do to inform the public? I, I, we'll be constructing on that lot the next, we don't have a start. Could you maybe nail price down to a start date so we can tell people in the neighborhood that, hey, there'll be some activity here, it's going to happen, so they aren't surprised one day when all the equipment rolls up and?
Well, yeah, I'd like to give the area businesses especially notice on that as well.
Yeah, that, that would be good, if we could get a firm date. So you received the 15,000 award for the inventory on the water line?
So that, that part was completely paid for. The other thing I was going to mention to the tennis ball and pickleball courts, those should be starting, that was the other thing I wanted to add to that list, maybe any time in the next couple of weeks.
Who's contracted?
Williams.
Williams?
Yes.
How many courts we have? Just one or four?
And that'll be utilized for tennis or for pickleball, same size court, paint things, so. And I think, once they do that, there's, I say the drying time was two weeks maybe or something, 10, 14 days, and then they'll come back in and finish that up. So hopefully, first of, I mean, even mid-September, that should be ready to be used.
So I understand we averted a crisis down at the pool with the coronator?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're able to get that installed and finish off the weekend, so.
Well.
Very minimal.
Congratulations, getting the pickleball in.
We're excited. It'll be nice.
Before we adjourn, I'd just add one thing, two things, on Jefferson Street, you got something else?
Go ahead. I got one.
Well, I just wanted to thank Rose Brothers, Rose Brothers Farms for helping us with our latest rock that we have in there. I believe Doug placed it on the east side of the road, south of the alley.
Yeah, just south of it, right there by the home pit.
And the two rocks that were donated by.
Widdemire.
Widdemires, or on the north side of York, on both corners, so just wanted to say thanks to those people.
They look really nice.
Any others?
Yep.
Oh, well, the, the police and fire both have submitted their budgets for next year, and we've had it for some time. We should probably try to get a workshop just to talk to them about those before we jump into Doug's stuff and bigger utilities. So what do y'all think about that, about the workshop with Public Safety?
Do you want to go to August?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to look at August?
Well, the sooner the better, because we will just, we've got a lot coming up in the next few months, so. Yeah, our next meeting's 21st. I mean, do you want to? Is Monday night good for everybody typically? I mean, so that just leaves 14th to 28th. We can shoot for 14th to 28th, is either, any one of those?
I work mids, I think, the 14th and 15th, so.
I'd rather do the 28th.
28th gives a couple of weeks to go over and look at it. But yeah, yeah, so, so what time do you think folks want to get together?
Five.
Five? You know, like, right?
28.
Are you good 28? Let's check your count.
I'm good, whatever time, whatever day, so.
I don't need to be there.
No, Doug, you really, no.
It's nice for me.